Member of the public, which is lovely.
Strap yourselves in.
Talking of which, it's 7:15, so we should start our meeting. I'm going to start off with the announcement that please be aware that all meetings are recorded and will be made available to the public on our YouTube channel after the meeting has taken place. Your participation indicates that you consent to being included in the meeting recording. So having noted that, we're going to start off with the traditional 10 minutes of public participation. So if any resident would like to address the council on any item on the agenda, please make yourself known now. Either by shouting out or raising your hand in teams. Can't see anybody stepping forward. Okay, all right, so then we'll start the meeting properly. So agenda item number one is apologies for absence. Deputy Town Clerk, shall we do the roll call, please?
Yes, we can, Chair. Hopefully, everyone can hear me clearly. So starting from the top, councillor Andrew Poodle.
Yes.
Councillor Barry Banks.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Ben Pitt.
Present.
Caroline Green.
Present.
Caroline Gregson, we have apologies for with valid reasons. Councillor Christine Green.
Present.
Colin Maslin.
Yes, I'm here.
And councillor Delphine Johnson.
Yes.
Frank Giles.
Sandy. Yes, she's there.
Yep. Councillor Diana Collins, we have apologies for with valid reasons. Councillor Doug Terry.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Emma Speed.
Present.
Councillor Gordon Thorpe.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Justin Cooper Marsh.
Present.
Nicola Presland.
Present.
Councillor Paul Davis.
Present.
Councillor Robert Simonis.
Present.
Andy Giles.
Yes, I'm here.
And last but not least, councillor Stephen Ferguson.
Present. I should, thank you, thank you, Deputy Town Clerk. I should also note that we're lucky enough to have our guest clerk tonight, who's Jenny from Little Paxton. So thank you very much, Jenny, for helping us and we hope you don't regret it by the end of the meeting. Agenda item number two is declarations of interest. To receive from councillors declarations as to discloseable procurie interests and/or non-statutory discloseable interests along with the nature of those interests in relation to any agenda item. Does any councillor have any interest to declare?
No.
If anybody has not present, I think we're all present actually, but if anybody's present turns up late, could you give me a shout so I can ask them that question?
Mr Chairman.
Yes.
Councillor has an interest in a non-procurory interest in item six, grant aid for three pillars. I am a Freemason and the Three Pillars organisation is run by Freemasons, but I have no direct involvement in that organisation.
I should also probably declare that I have volunteered for Three Pillars on several occasions and also they are one of my mayoral charities, but I don't have any other involvement other than that. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Agenda item number three is outstanding resolutions, which I hope we can get through quite quickly. Councillor Banks, is there any update on the Sue Jarrett memorial?
No, I've spoken to Dave. He's waiting for any suggestions from councillors or other people. Obviously, Sue was involved with so many organisations. He's waiting to see if they come up with anything as well. It's not a rush thing, this. I mean, it could be next year or this year. It's just if we get enough suggestions, we can put it to Dave and his family. So if anybody's got ideas, then if they give them to me, we can share them with Dave.
So any ideas, it would be a good idea if they send them to councillor Banks, I think that would be helpful. Councillor Pitt's hand is up.
Thank you, Chair. So I was at a Sydney initiative meeting a week or two ago where so the initiative is looking to do something similar in Sue's memory. And so it got, you know, it came up that the town council is looking to make some sort of memorial. So I think it might be worth our two organisations at least kind of working together. So we do something complimentary rather than, you know, overlapping. There was talk about doing the Sydney Initiative, doing something in the title. And so possibly the suggestion came up that the town council might like to do something in Priory Park, possibly a tree and a bench, which sounded like a good idea from, you know, first glance. But if I could recommend we sort of investigate that line of discussion.
Thank you, councillor Pitt. Councillor Pitt, while you have the floor, the second outstanding resolution is to do with transforming places through heritage, which was the Osthouse project. Is there any news on the Osthouse project?
Nothing too concrete, I'm afraid. So we've had some further discussions with the owners. I think there's been some miscommunication or misunderstanding about the timeline and what we need from them and what they need from us in order to progress it. I don't want to say much more than that in an open meeting, but we're hopeful that we can break the deadlock that we've got at the moment and get things moving.
Councillor Maslin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just picking up on the comment about Sue Jarrett. At an ESCA meeting, and as has been agreed here at Sineerstown Council, we have agreed to put four benches in the Eatans, which, as you all know, Eatans was a love of Sue's. And we've suggested putting a plaque on there on each bench, something on the lines of this bench is dedicated to Sue Jarrett. And Dave was quite happy with that suggestion. We haven't gone too formal at the moment. We don't know when the benches are going to be installed. We've got the okay from HDC to do it. It's just a question of getting, well, our Ops department being allowed to do it due to Covid. So that was all I wanted to add. The benches will have a plaque of some description commemorating all or some of Sue's efforts on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Councillor Pitt, again, Acre Report.
Oh, by me. All right, what's happening here? So Acre Report, yeah, so I'm working with the community centres manager to sort of enact the decisions that the working group has done, has made in terms of working towards a budget, the target budget for the financial year that we'll be setting the budget in December. So we're basically working towards having a business plan effectively ready for September to bring to Finance and Governance Committee. At the same time, we're also liaising closely with the staff regarding vaccination centres and various other moves out of lockdown. So it's all been pretty busy dealing with the immediate challenges. But we're making slow but steady progress on the longer term plans.
Thank you very much, councillor Pitt. Councillor Chapman, outstanding resolution tracker. I understand it was a meeting which I should have attended but accidentally missed. Was there any progress in that meeting?
Yes, Chair, and there was a meeting. And I think we reviewed the list that there is currently. Clearly, that will be added to and reported back to the council once matters are dealt with and completed. So I think that it would be a good idea if at some point we could have that document circulated to councillors. I see Karen's got her hand up, so I'll give way to her.
Deputy Town Clerk.
Thank you, Barry. Yes, just to add to what Barry has just said. So we did meet and there were 87 resolutions from June 2018 to the end of last year. We went through them all. There's four or five that are still in progress, but some new actions following advice from our local clerk, Philip Peacock, who joined us, has given us some other avenues to progress those. So hopefully, we'll see some more results on those. And yes, of course, I'm just going to update the notes from that and a copy will be circulated to all members so they have sight of that resolution tracker.
Thank you, Karen. While you have the floor, has there been any progress with the pedestrianisation of the attempt to get some clarity on the contract with the Rowley family?
Yes. Sorry.
Up to you.
Yes, that was on that tracker. And so the next step for that one is we are going to write to County Council. Gillian Beazley, I believe, is the contact that I should be approaching first to ask if the contract has been renewed after it expired in 2005. If not, are there any steps in place to renew this? So we're basically putting the question to CCC, putting the ball in their court to come back to us on what's happened since 2005, because that's the only contract that we have and that was the expiry date. So again, that was some good advice from Philip. So, you know, hopefully I'll have something back from them, maybe in a week. We might be able to progress this forward. But obviously, it could be longer, depends what their priorities are. So that's the next step. We don't need to continue down the route of going through our own solicitors. I remember that correctly, haven't I, Barry?
Yes, that's pretty much.
Yeah. So yeah, going a new route for that one to try and get some clarity on it.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the youth council. Youth council is progressing really well. You might recall that we established a steering group of young people who we co-opted. And the role of that group of people, I think there's about 10 of them, is to define the role of the youth council and also determine how they're going to be elected and make sure that they are a representative group of young people. I think we've had four meetings of the steering group led by a volunteer called Zoe Cumberland, who's been fantastic. And Zoe's put together a plan on how we're going to take that group of young people through the next couple of months so that we can elect our first youth council in May. When we made the resolution to form the working steering group, sorry, the steering group, we also said that we would be paying, we made a resolution that we would pay some of the youth council budget to pay a moderator. And Zoe Cumberland, who's led the youth council steering group so far, has kindly agreed to do that. So we're going to be paying her some of that budget in order to take the youth council to its first election in May. Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, just because obviously, as a town council, we want to hear from our young people. So are we going to have a councillor co-opted on to the youth council? Or are we going to be having somebody from the youth council coming and reporting back to the town council so that we can make sure that we hear their voices?
It's really important that we hear their voices and I think that's a critical observation. That's for the youth council to decide. That's going to be one of the deliberations that they're making in the next few months. It's also for us to decide how we want to do it. But yes, I hope that their voice will be represented in our decision-making, especially when it relates to young people as well. So that will be decided before we elect them in May and I'll have to get back to you on that. Okay. Green open spaces. Okay, that item, I'm awaiting instructions for councillor Giles and councillor Chapman to send a letter, which I haven't received yet, so I haven't sent a letter. Deputy Town Clerk, have you got your hand up?
Yes, I did. So green open spaces did come up two or three times on that resolution tracker, because it's been discussed a number of times in different formats and guises. And it was agreed that the best way forward was for the green spaces to be included with the Strategy Committee's review of the neighbourhood plan. And then that would be submitted to HDC and they would then advise if a referendum is needed. Again, Barry, anything in addition to that, have I remembered that correctly?
Councillor Chapman.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Chair. The green open spaces items, the three of them that are on the resolution tracker, are a different matter to the application for a town green order. This item should read town green order rather than green open spaces. And what the chairman is asking for is councillor Giles was going to deal with the timing of when the town council submitted its letter in support of a town green order on Pepacor's Lane.
Yeah, perhaps I could help out here, Chairman. I have received in the last few days notification that the application is going to go out to public consultation on the 25th. It will be advertised in the Hunt's Post. It'll also be advertised in the library and also on various websites. And it's then that we need people to write in letters of support or whatever. And it gives the members of the public a chance to view their thoughts on the application. I would hope now that we'll be able to instruct you or help you to write a letter of support. But I think between us, Barry and myself, and you, we'll be able to get something in as soon as possible. But it is, can I just make one point here? My screen is not showing members, it's showing visitors and all sorts of... I'm not getting any pictures on. Is there a reason for this or?
It's at your end, councillor Giles. I can see pictures. I'm sure everybody else can as well.
Yeah, if I may, I think most of them have switched their video off.
Oh, have they? Oh, right, okay.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Giles. The next item on the outstanding resolutions is play areas.
Chair, I'm sorry, I had my hand up regarding the...
Sorry. Yep, sorry, I'll move on. Yeah, sorry.
Absolutely fine, no problem. What I was going to say is I'm concerned as a sense that we do not have a timeline, because obviously we've enabled plan and everything to review it. Obviously, we've put a lot of thing in place with the strategy group, but we need to keep in mind that in one year time is going to be the election. So we may have a lot of new councillors who may not be aware of, have a fuller view of, you know, of the work which has been carried so far. So I think I will encourage the council to look at giving us some type of guide with timing so that we don't end up pushing into long grass and that is going to be the town election. And then it's going to be some time for new councillor to get the anger thing and then keep pushing and pushing it. So yeah, so I would suggest that we give ourselves a time by which we need to have a good review of the neighbourhood plan and be ready to submit it in the coming months.
So that's already on the agenda, I think, for councillor Simonis, deputy mayor, and the Strategy Committee. So I'm sure it'll be taken care of. It'll be in the next Strategy meeting, I'm very sure. The next item on the outstanding resolution tracker list is play areas. I'm supposed to write to HDC recommending they install the same communication boards in HDC play areas as those. I don't really understand this. We did make representation to councillor Fuller, who's leader of HDC, and the chief executive, Joe Lancaster, in our quarterly meeting the week before last. But councillor Johnson, could you help me in phrasing that letter? Because I'm not quite sure I have enough information to write it. So if you could hook up with me afterwards, we could do that and send that letter together. Thank you. And charity dragon boat race, we have an agenda item already, which we can deal with that later, I think. Agenda item number four, to approve the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 23rd of February 2021 as a true and accurate record. I'm sure you've all had a chance to review those minutes. Are there any factual corrections anyone would like to point out or so we just approve them?
Okay, I'm going to... Councillor, recommended for approval.
Thank you, councillor Pitt. Do I have a second?
Second, that.
Councillor Thorpe was first. All those in favour say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Anybody against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you very much. Committee members, minutes. Members to note the following committee minutes. Councillor Giles, would you like to present the minutes from the Operations and Maintenance Committee, please?
I will indeed. I thought I'd printed them out. I know I'd printed them out, but once again, they've disappeared. But everybody's had a good look at them. Were just any questions you want answering? I will do my effort to present these minutes to the town council for, they have been approved for noting.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Councillor Cooper Marsh, Finance and Governance Committee, from the 9th of February.
Chair, I've got my hand up.
Oh, yes, councillor Chapman, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to raise that these are the February meetings of the minutes of the operations committee meeting. We did have a meeting last week on Tuesday before the agenda was set out. And it included resolutions to full council, which should be on tonight's agenda. Because they are resolutions to full council, they're not dependent upon the minutes being signed off because they're considered by the full council at this next meeting. But there's no one there. What concerns me is there was a resolution to fund, there was a resolution to fund the fencing, which has been outstanding for two years now for Shady Walk. And that play area is full of dog poo. It's really been in need of this fencing for some time. And I'd like your indulgence to put that resolution to the council this evening as it should have been on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. I totally, as a clarification, I looked through the agenda and I couldn't see where it was. But this is another example of if we don't do it, another month go by, et cetera. And it's my favourite word, slippage. And we can't afford this slippage all the time. This fence has been going on for ages. It really has. And I can't find the budget we agreed on. But perhaps councillor Chapman can help me out on that or Karen? Was it in the region of something like 7,000?
Chair, may I?
Yes, councillor Chapman.
Yes, the resolution was that we weren't sure because we didn't have the, whether or not we had any money left in the budget to do this. But the cost of the fencing is 6,000 pounds. And so what we would like to do is, or what we proposed to recommend to full council was that we asked the council to approve up to 6,000 pounds. And if there's money which can be used to offset that in the Ops budget, because we're now at the end of the financial year. But if there's money, appropriate budget heads left unspent, then we can use that. So it would be less than 6,000 pounds. But we didn't have the, we didn't have the financial information at the meeting. So we'd like to propose that we can spend up to 6,000 pounds on this fencing.
From which budget? Well...
Well, I think...
Sorry, go on, Barry. The issue here is that we did not have the information. We don't particularly want this to dwell on another month and go into the next financial year. Unfortunately, we didn't have the financial officer with us. But there are several, I use the word guardedly, several small pots, if you like, with small underspends, which I think we look at later on in the agenda, which could be used to do this fence. The maximum is, if you like, the word I'm looking for perhaps is for the town council to underwrite this fence so that we can get it done, ready for the summer, et cetera, discourage the dog walkers or encourage them to clean up our play area. It is quite urgent. And where we're going to get the money from, I don't know, is the short answer.
I'm not sure that we can deal with this tonight. The agenda's been available since Thursday last week. This is the first I've heard about it. I mean, you could have emailed me and told me that this was missing and we could have corrected it perhaps on Thursday or we could have... We haven't got the information, I don't think, to make that decision tonight. It's too difficult. And so maybe perhaps the only way forward is to arrange an extraordinary meeting in which we'll work out how we can spend this money if we can't wait. Councillor Johnson, you've got your hand... Oh, sorry, our clerk has a hand up. Jenny, please go first.
It's not an agenda item. I mean, don't have the right information in front of us to make a decision tonight. I think another month, if we wait two years, another month or three weeks won't make any difference at this stage. We don't have the information to make an informed decision tonight.
I agree with you, Jenny. Thank you very much. Councillor Chapman.
Chair, I'm very unhappy about this because it has been a long time. It's taken months to get a quote. It's a particularly difficult bit of fencing. And I do believe that it makes a difference if it's put off for another six weeks before we order. Because that play area at the moment, anyone visiting it will see that it's absolutely covered in dog poo. And I think that we have a duty to our residents to ensure that we do what we can in order to make that a safe environment for children. And coming out of lockdown, there will be more children wanting to go out and use that play area than at the moment. And it will be summer months and we will miss that and they will lose out. And so I'm very unhappy it's not on the agenda. I was hoping...
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Pitt.
Point of order. I think councillor Chapman's making a speech about an item that's not on the agenda. We should move on.
Thank you. I'd like to move on if that's possible. Councillor Johnson, you have your hand up, is it to do with this?
I was just going to say, Ian, our operation manager, has got the quote and I'm sure he would be happy to circulate it to all members of the council. And then we can, if we could put it on the next agenda or as soon as possible so that we can address that situation. And just to let you, just the quote we look, so it's to support one of our local company.
It's not on the agenda, councillor Johnson.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely fine. Just if we could ask Ian Webb to circulate the quote, then all of us have an idea.
Jenny, you've still got your hand up or is that...
No, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper Marsh, Finance and Government Committee meetings from 9th of February.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. As councillors may notice, there was a recommendation for council on this agenda, which was at the last full council meeting for CAB. Other than that, there's no other things to mention.
Thank you very much. Councillor Maslin, the Planning Committee, from the 2nd and 16th of February and the 2nd of March.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I commend to the House items 105 to 111 for the 16th of February. And then our numbering system seems to have gone a bit wrong, so I'll just take them on block.
Thank you very much.
If anybody has any questions, please shout.
No questions. Thank you, councillor Maslin. And councillor Pitt, Promotion Events Committee, from the 2nd of February.
Yep, presented. I've seen... Yeah, presented. I've seen, happy to take questions.
Thank you, councillor Pitt. Agenda item number six, grant aid application from Three Pillars, Feeding the Homeless. I think this is a recommendation. Was it from the Finance Committee or from the Grants Committee? Councillor Cooper Marsh?
This was a, this is from the Finance Committee.
I think it's the Finance Committee.
Yeah, it comes from there. So as you can see in your packs, we had a grant application from Three Pillars. This is to get electrical work done in one, in one of their buildings. Now, it's come to full council because it's 10,000 pounds. And the rules are for grants, anything over five, well, 5,001 pound or more, these grants have to come before, before council. So we have recommended to approve to full council for approval. We did put a couple of stipulations in that they had a 10-year lease on their property. And I believe there had been a update with advice from Philip Peacock. Is that correct, Karen?
Sorry, I was just checking that the representative was here. Can you repeat the question, Justin, for me?
Yes. So there was, we went to, we asked for the acting town clerk, then Philip, Philip to look at the grant and
Yes.
Regardless of that, and I think he's come back hasn't he?
Yes. So we did have a meeting, which Teddy RFO joined us at as well. And we do have a representative here from Three Pillars. So I believe when I spoke to Teddy earlier that they would answer any questions first, and then Tiadora and I can give additional information if it's needed.
Okay, I'm happy for that. So
Thank you.
I'll pass the floor back to you, Chairman, for questions to Jed at Three Pillars. Thank you.
Councillor Chapman?
Chair, my, my question has really been, really been answered or mentioned by, mentioned by the chairman of Finance and General Purposes. And that is, it was our concern that a lease for five years, when we're paying 10,000 pounds for infrastructure, was insufficient, and that it needed to be at least 10 years. But my question really is, have we seen at least for 10 years now?
Do you want me to answer that, councillor?
Who's that? Sorry?
It's Jed.
Hi Jed. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Yeah, we have submitted and secured a 10-year lease. A copy has been sent to Teddy and Karen. So hopefully that should have been circulated. That's been signed and agreed.
It has been, I believe. Was that not part of the agenda pack sent to by email?
It was, Chair.
Thank you very much, Jed. I appreciate that. Jenny, you've got your hand up, our clerk?
No, mine's not up. I'm a little bit sorry.
Thank you, councillor Pitt.
Thank you. So yeah, thanks Jed, that your new, newly drafted lease is in the agenda pack. So thank you for organising that so quickly. And I think, I can't remember if this has already been said this evening, or is via email. But the advice from our local clerk was to have a service level agreement with a sliding scale of repayment of £100 per month, should the building, should the lease be terminated early, earlier than 10 years. I don't think that's very likely, but I think we should follow that advice just to protect ourselves. The other point I just wanted to raise, so at the Finance and Governance Meeting, there was a quote from AG Electrical, which forms part of the total cost of the work. And I raised the question regarding whether the groundwork were necessary in terms of the, the two pieces of work overlapping. I noticed in the agenda pack for this evening that the quote from AG Electrical is significantly lower than the one that was circulated at the last Finance and Governance Meeting. So it's, comes in at 3,120, rather than the original one was 5,880. So it's, it's, the saving is 2,760. So I just wanted to understand whether the application is still for 10,000 pounds, or whether you were looking for a low amount because the costs have gone down.
It would be useful if we had the full grant, because we were trying to secure the additional costs up to 12,600 pounds for the, the original one, which has now come down. So we are trying to secure additional there. That's proving somewhat difficult, obviously, with these difficult times. So we would like to see if we could secure the 10,000 pound.
Okay, thank you for your chair. So from what I can understand, the full cost of the two pieces, the two parts of the works comes to 9,861, which is obviously just shy of 10,000.
Yeah.
So just to share that with councillors as we deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more hands up. Would anybody like to make a proposal on this? Councillor Cooper Marsh, perhaps?
Right. I propose that we, we grant the 10,000 pounds to Three Pillars. Through the, just going through the packet at the moment to see, to see what the reserves are and where we can go from. Bear with me. It's not in that pack. My question to Tiadora is, before I do make a proposal, if she could clarify which grants are available?
Do you think the Finance and Governance Committee already decided on, on that? Or they haven't? Let me just double check. Just bear with me for a couple of minutes.
I couldn't see a proposal on, on the chat. So.
Councillor Cooper Marsh, while you're deliberating, councillor Giles and Chapman have their hand up. So councillor Sandy Giles first, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say, having looked at that report, I am absolutely shocked that in the 21st century, this country has to resort to feeding our most vulnerable people in this way. And thank goodness that we have something like Three Pillars to do that. And when it comes to the vote, I'd urge everybody to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. And I agree completely with that statement. Councillor Chapman?
Yes, Chairman. I, I don't think I've, I've got the lease in my pack that I'm looking at that says 10 years. But if there's, if there's another one that's been issued since, then mine still says five years. I, I wanted to ask, are we going to take the advice of Clark Devonold? Sorry, not Clark Devonold. Oh, God. I went back in time for a moment. Clark Peacock, in terms of, in terms of payback, should the lease be terminated early? Because it seems as though we've had advice from the clerk there. And also, and also, in terms of the 10 years, that needs to be part of the resolution anyway.
Thank you, councillor Pitt. Deputy Town Clerk, sorry, councillor Chapman, deputy Town Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to answer councillor Chapman's question. So the advice from Philip Peacock, oh, sorry, messages are covering my screen, was indeed that, and we was, if you were to agree to grant the 10,000 pounds, it would be on the condition that the funds would not be released until receipt of the signature of a service level agreement. And that, in that agreement, would agree a sliding scale repayment of 100 pounds per month, should the lease be terminated within the first 10 years. So that protects some of the taxpayers' money. So if they, they don't have the building for the full 10 years, we would get some money paid back to us.
Is that included in this resolution?
It is. Well, I'll put in the chat when somebody starts to make a proposal, and then I'll do what I normally do. Put it in writing in the chat so that they can agree.
Councillor Chapman, again.
Chair, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to propose that we, we make this grant at 10,000 pounds against a 10-year lease, and that the service level agreement be finalised by Finance and General Purposes.
Can, can we use the wording that, that, that's in the chat? Actually, I've just been pointed out. We're gonna, just before eight o'clock, we're gonna take a 10-minute adjournment, so councillors can pay their respects at the anniversary doorstep vigil for the pandemic. So we're gonna pause in a few minutes' time. Councillor Chapman, when we come back, could we, could you read the words of the proposal on the screen? And see you agree with that, so we're clear about what we're voting on. I think the deputy Town Clerk.
Yes, Chairman, I'm reading it now. I mean, it's fine. I, I'd like to propose that, but just subject to a service level agreement being agreed by the Finance and General Purposes meeting.
I'd like to second that, please. I'd like to second that, Barry.
Thank you. Before we do that, I'm going to move to adjourn this meeting until 8:05 PM. So members can attend the doorstep vigil if they choose to. So that's motion without notice. Do I have a seconder?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson, all, all those in favour say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody against? Let me, most carry, this meeting is adjourned. So we'll see you back in 10 minutes' time.
Yeah. And I will stop the recording and restart it again, Chair, when we come back.